Okay, I've got it right at six thirty, so let's go ahead and call our meeting to order. Good evening and welcome to Scottsburg City Council on this May the tenth, two thousand twenty-one, in the year of early. And the first thing we do is we'll call our council order, then we have prayer and the pledge of allegiance. So let's stand if you wouldn't mind to have prayer instead of saying the pledge. Father, we come before you this evening to, first, just to praise your name and to thank you for the goodness that you give from your hand each day. Father, the sun comes out like a bright room coming out of his chamber and runs his horse, and it's amazing to see the sunset, so we thank you for each day. It is like just a special day, it's a gift from your hand. Let us not take them for granted, forgive us if we do take them for granted, Father. It's a joy, Father, to walk this pilgrimage of life, and especially with friends and family, Father, that we walk here in this town that we've grown up with and we've helped, we've shared hurts and hopes and dreams with. We thank you for the blessings you give us, the friendship and the family. We thank you for this time, Father, that you give us as well, to come together as a community. Father, to praise for your discernment, to pray for your wisdom and your understanding, to pray for the ideas to come forward, to how you would have the city go forward, and to correct the issues that we have coming our way. So, Father, we just pray for your presence, in Jesus' name we pray, amen. Now for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the right of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we have the roll call from our board president, Jan Hart.
Here, Amy.
Here.
Chris Albertson.
Here.
Phil Hublin. Rick Mann.
Here.
Christian Evans.
Here.
Chuck Rose.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Hart. Next thing we have is the approval of the minutes of the April twenty-sixth meeting. If councils had time to read through those meetings, if you will accept a motion to pass this present.
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Christian Evans makes the motion, is there a second?
No second.
Chris Albertson's second. Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none on the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, you and Evans, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is a time for a public comment. The Scottsburg City Council accepts public comments. Individuals wishing to address the council, we ask to come forward and state their name for the record. Each person will have five minutes to voice their opinion. The marks should focus on issues and not be used to target city employees or elected officials. Do we have anyone at this time who would like to come forward and address City Council? Is it your time? Okay, hearing none, what was that public say? Thank you so much. Old business. I'll go to Council President, Council President, we have any old business, Chuck?
None, mine not.
Okay, anybody else have anything? Hearing none, let's go on over to new business, and this will be with Ms. Jill Staggaster, the weekly group regarding the good loan.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, and Mr. Gooden's here, is he?
Yes.
So what you have, and I think that was sent out in your packet, of the synopsis that the, your loan board reviewed and met on last Thursday, which at that time, that was the last date, that was the last date that the city could act on the loan in order to meet the flexibility deadline that EDA had given until about fifteen minutes ago, and EDA sent out an email and said the flexibilities are now available until June of two thousand twenty-two. So I'm just throw that out there. Joys of working with federal government and grants, there we go. So regardless, the loan board met, and Mr. Gooden is requesting two hundred and twenty thousand dollars to, for construction of a structure that services new garage and office building. The existing garage and office building will be removed, but there is a structure on the southeast corner of the property that will remain intact. A new fencing will be constructed behind the new primary structure to both conceal the impound lot and rent automobiles and provide security. Two gates will also be installed on the property, and owner will consider fencing on the sides of the lot as well, with the exception of frontage along North Garden Street due to large turning radiuses that are necessary or required for the trucks. They also, right now, have nine full-time employees, and they intend to expand to additional four employees. So they've been in business now for more than thirty years here in Scottsburg, providing commercial towing and repair, along with heavy duty trucks, also on autos, roadside assistance, mobile service, and do a lot of work with tractors, trailers, hardwinds, and industrial equipment, so large equipment. They're located, for those that don't know, on eight-eight-seven North Garden Street. So you have the packet that was provided to the loan board, that the loan board, you have in front of you a copy of the minutes that were not available when the packet went out to you or when I sent the packet to the mayor's office on Thursday afternoon, but you do have a draft copy of the loan board minutes that put their stipulations or their recommendations to you, the City Council, and those start basically down the bottom of the first page. The loan amount will be two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, a bearing interest rate of two percent for the life of the loan, which is due to the flexibilities that EDA has given. The loan term will be ten years with monthly payments of principal and interest. Those, that I think is fairly standard. This will be treated more during the construction as a construction loan, so the borrower can make monthly draws on construction costs upon presentation of construction-related bills to be paid from the draw amount. Something to understand here is that the city has its money on hand, whereas the last loan with Indiana Bottle, the city has it, that is new money from the federal government, so we have to draw that down periodically, so it's not readily available. Here, depending on how we can get those checks written, the money is actually here. So upon presentation of those invoices and things, it's not going to be thirty days or so like it might be to get the money from Chicago or B.C. to the city. So it's here on hand, we don't have to go through that process. The loan will be secured by mortgage, our real estate and personal guarantee of Greg Good and Anthony Good. Privacy screen will be constructed around the perimeter of the property except for the western part of the north and south boundaries, and that part of the property facing North Garden Street that must remain open in order to allow free-flow vehicle traffic, and now, property and construction project must receive building permit after approval by the city advisory plant commission and/or city building commissioner. So that's what the loan board is presenting that to the City Council with those recommendations. And now I would turn it over to you to feel free to ask me any questions about that, but also, Mr. Gooden's here to answer, publicly answer, or explain anything that you need from his, from him.
Jill, my head, maybe you and Tish talked about this earlier in the day, this where, but maybe he's just presenting things for us to my office?
I think when we get to that schedule, we'll set up, I think it's once every thirty days, then there will be some invoices and such that are presented, whether it's through me to you, or, and then we'll be doing construction draws. That's similar to what we're doing with Indiana Bottle, in that, but we're anticipating, asking them to anticipate their fees or their expenses that they need, so that we can request it from the, from EDA, have it sent down to you, and then we can disperse it out. So I think ultimately, yes, they'll be coming from your office, but we can work out how you'd like that process to go.
Is this a new career requisite for this type of?
It's, we haven't, in the, since I've been involved in the EDA revolving loan funds, we've had one construction project, and that was Indiana Bottle, when they did their most recent expansion, and it was handled more as a construction loan, so that you could have, so that, not that anyone would just take the money and not do what they were supposed to, but work that more as a construction loan. EDA requires you to do that for this, for the CARES Act money, and it's probably good practice to do it for a project this size anyway, to handle it that way. And the loan board is recommending that we do it in that way. I don't know if I've ever answered your question, but we haven't had that situation come up because we've not done construction loans. There are a lot more requirements and rules related to construction loans with this type of money.
And I'm sure we'll work along with you on it, that's.
But we've come up with something satisfactory to you in your office. Or at least I would too. So I'll step out of the way here, and guys can ask whatever questions you would like.
I have a question about the fencing. What type of fence would we?
Chain link, that slides in, is not seeable through, eight-foot high. Security at the top, same as you would see in the jail or something to keep sending people out. You know, we've been lucky, we've had very little problems, you know, but it's more to hide it, things that are behind it.
So that would be the long, dark tree?
It runs, the fencing would run north and south, parallel to U.S. thirty-one. There is a section between the Dollar Store on the north side and existing wood fencing that those property owners have had in there for thirty years, literally. And then on the south side, where Lucas's property is, we will install fencing there and go back to an existing structure that we're keeping, and that will, all that will be eight feet.
So the Pine Street fence will not be repaired, is that your intention?
The Pine Street fence eventually will be the same thing, it will become woolen. It's got woolen fence watered down, that is six foot there, and it's got six-foot-high panels, but the problem is that they want to use that as an alleyway going to the apartments behind L.A.'s. So they break that, break his slats out to go over it, so we found out that a six-foot fence will not work, so we're going to hake it and the security at the top, basically, so they can't.
And that's going to be all along Pine Street?
And if, May, this is, this is the fence you're talking about here?
The fence you're talking about here.
So in your packages, there should have been a picture of that, but that's what I'm saying. No one's seen it, you can.
And that's what I was trying to understand, the drawing here. Obviously, this is my district, and I think that there have been some constituents of mine who have some issues in the past, and I understand it's tough, and I also avouch the fact that there is trash on that Pine Street side. That is not your trash most of the time, there is people from the apartments that I've washed myself, throwing trash out, and it's been a big issue. I think that there, the fence has to maybe be a priority, and I know that's your guys' attention from what you're saying. I would feel much comfortable, much more comfortable, from the city's perspective, if this loan, because I think it's great that you guys hire forty people, invest in the community as much as you guys have, but I think the fence would have to be done first, essentially, is what I guess I'm.
We can't put a fence up in the front, do a construction, can't be done.
I'm not saying the front, I'm saying the three sides, so the Pine Street and the north and south side. You do not, that, could not move that up already? I'm okay with the front side, I, I mean, it's, the turning radius, it's an issue, I understand that. I don't want to put those stipulations on.
Actually, if you drive around the building where our current office is, you will see all the new fencing from the back part.
Correct.
We may need it up there six months to put up.
But can you put that up first, is that?
Yeah, we can put that up, that is a temporary fix to what we want to do. Back there and back on Pine Street.
So the loan that you guys will be receiving is in order to purchase that slatted fencing in order to put up, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I, like I said, if that money's going towards that, and I understand it's a construction loan draw, I would feel much better approving this contingent upon the first draw being for that fence. That make sense?
It makes sense, yes.
That's where I, I would leave it to council for the same, I think that's the initial issue. I think we've had a push about code enforcement, and I think we've done a good job to this point. I understand with your business, it's very tough to control that to some degree, but I think if we're issuing money out to Jill's point, this is money that we have on hand that can go out to any business, I think we need to make sure that we're setting the precedent of code enforcement being the first priority. And that's, that's just my opinion, and again, I could, you know, that's just only one person, can you, there's other company here, but I would feel much better about where this is headed, get best care at first.
And I'm, I understand your concerns, but I, you know, I hate to put, on a construction company, we want you to do this first to get this money, you know, that's, you know, I think if Mr. Gooden says that's going to be, and he promises to do that, I'm okay with that, you know, but I just, I'm not in the construction business, and I, you know, and I want to hear from, I want them to be able to have the flexibility to do what they think is best.
And I agree with that, I also, but I have a problem citing someone on Frank Street for not going in the grass and.
Well, there's a lot of things that aren't being cited.
I know.
All right, so that's, we, we.
I know.
It's not just a few things.
I know.
I know in my neighborhood, I've got a neighbor that's got a whole bunch of junk, old CARES, old propane tanks, and people complain to me about it, and it's not being taken care of. So, but, but what I'm saying is, when it comes to the loan, I guess the issue at hand is who's applied for a loan, and I'm okay if Mr. Gooden's going to say, that's going to be one of the first things to be done, but I don't want to tie, tie it.
It's not a lump sum, it's a.
I understand that, but.
It's not like we're holding all of the money, but.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, if he promises that's going to be, you know, that's good enough for me, because the guy that's building it might say, hey, I want to do that first, we want to do this first, for whatever reason.
What's the plan of construction here, time here? Like what, as far as this drawing is concerned, well, how long are you looking to be?
It'll take nine days to complete what we need to do.
All of it altogether?
So three months?
Do you anticipate any type of ingress, egress off of Pine Street to get things? Because you're going to be tearing down buildings.
Nope.
Okay.
When you open up another, when you open up another archway, call it an opening, call it a gate, all you're doing is giving a headache. And not only that, there is no reason to add traffic to Pine Street, it has enough. We're going to talk about it. We're going to squash the traffic.
Saying you're going to property the way you want it.
Right.
No, and I can vouch for that, I mean, Pine Street, there's people that walk down to those apartments from Dollar Store and they'll throw whatever out there, I totally agree. I just, the fence, there's, there's constituents of mine on, on the street, when they pull up to that stop sign and they see the, the breakers in the fence, I understand that. That's why I said, and I said the word contingency, if that's your intention to put that fence first in that process of construction, I would much rather, you know, I feel better about that as opposed to later on in the process.
Well, we can do it another way. We already have got the fence purchased and bought, the wood fence, to put back up existing where that's at, because you're right, I mean, and a lot of it is if people know those apartments, go across there to the other, because they want to walk around, wander the street, and, I mean, it's just a chore. And, you know, we can still go with our original plan, putting that up there and blocking it more until the construction is over, or during the destruction, and when we start putting a fence, but that fence up first may be to help your people sell the heat.
Well, and it's not about necessarily that, I mean, I'm just talking about in general. I mean, I think the other concern, too, when you mentioned the Dollar Store, the, I guess that would be north portion, north, you know, your, your lot, and there is not a fence there, but there is trucks and other broken-down vehicles there currently. Is that, and that would be my, I guess my number two question, is are those one of those, I know you had, you can't remember the number offhand, there's so many that you were going to move away or dispose of here pretty recently, are those kind of taking the priority? Because I cannot put a fence there, but I also, I can't necessarily reconcile not putting a fence there, but also putting.
There will be seventy-five feet in front of the fence, to U.S. thirty-one.
Okay.
The reason there has to be is, you take, example, one of our large wreckers, it's got the under reach out and towed a tractor trailer.
Yeah.
You've got thirty-six feet of wrecker, and then you've got eighty feet of truck.
No, I, I would refer to the cars that there now.
Well, all that will be, there will be nothing parked outside the fence.
Okay, that's the goal.
All of that is what is going to be parked inside.
Okay, gotcha, that was just, that was my concern.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but no, the part out front will have nothing parked out front other than if you pull up there and come in for service work, you're, and it'll be automobiles, it won't be tractor trailer.
For sure. Okay.
Unless, you know.
Is this the current plan you have, Greg?
Is that what, seventy-five feet on the front?
Yes.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. So you're going to have your, your building will be, be there, so you can drive up to your building, and you've got a fierce rush for the big gate slides, but back on each side, on each side.
Correct. No, I think the plan is great. I just, like I said, I think the first step, I would like to see the, the current fence. And I don't want you to necessarily have to put the wood fence up just to take it back down and put another fence on top of it or what, you know, I don't want to add extra steps, but I would like to see that be the first step, personally.
I'm not, I'm fine with it being the first step, I just don't want to say this is contingent on a vote. It's definitely not a mine. I would prefer it to be the first step, like you said, a council one, but I don't know that my vote is contingent upon that. I think that I want the construction manager to do what's best for the, for the company to save the most money, and be, you know, so that they are efficient. So that just, that's all I'm saying, is that, I'm like you, I'm not saying that it isn't a priority, Council.
No, no.
I'm just saying it's not contingent for my vote. And, you know, you're at, you know, we're talking about that grass area that we both want to keep.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's.
Great job.
Well, thank you. I do have one question, that was actually something I was going to ask the mayor at a point. Is that part a city problem, or is that actually our problem?
So that, so.
Where's the, where's the, where's the, where's the?
So last year, there was an issue on that property where, well, I don't know if it was necessarily coming from your guys' side of the fence or where, where the tree originated, but it was like an overgrown shrub slash tree that was invading on the Pine Street. And then where that intersection was, there was near, a couple near misrecks there. So I even called Jason Applegate, and Jason Applegate was able to clear that because there is an easement there that the city obviously attends to that, from that portion on Pine Street. So he's basically referring to the back fence of this property to Pine Street.
Is that?
Is that easement, what, six?
Is it twenty-foot easement on each side of the, or the twelve feet that the city owns? What is the, I'm from the, and that is from the center of the roadway end up?
Technically, you own it, it's just the ability, the city for utilities and water, so.
That's what we're on.
And.
Well, because I'll tell you my thought. We're going to go back around there, take one of those large wreckers, and pick that tree up out of ground and get rid of it because of that fence.
Yeah.
Because it is, I mean, it's something we probably shouldn't have done a few years ago.
Yeah.
Because that tree has become a big problem.
Yeah. And this is the one that was recently cut down?
Yeah.
Because there's a couple over there, I know, and it was removed.
And it is all that easement, top, re moved, mowed.
But like I said, ever since that had been removed, about, I think it was about a year ago, you guys have been mowing it, I think it's been, it's looked much better. Obviously, like I said, there's a ton of trash that you have to mitigate. That, I mean, again, I, I just, we're talking about city money, the city loan, I think that's just.
And I'm okay with what you said, that's all.
And that's what, I, I want, like I said, I have a problem with the loan amount, the term, what you guys are trying to do, I just want to make sure that that's priority one, a, you know, exclamation point.
Yeah, I feel okay with it, I mean, I think it's very well outlined in the scope of work, and it's a major component of what you're putting in up there, so.
Right.
As long as, you know, in my opinion, it's kind of contingent upon that anyways because it's part of the scope of work of them, not just that it is.
Chuck, you're in.
Good.
I want to thank Greg and Anthony both for just making the place look really nice. And I have every, I have every thought that it's going to be just really nice and you have this beautiful fence up and everything's going to be new and nice, and so it'll be great. So thank you so very much for doing this. With that said, then, we have a motion go forward with the Scottsburg Economic and Industrial Development Board, and they're thinking both.
Well, I, I think Greg, I mean, would you feel comfortable putting that first as, as a priority? I mean, is it?
I do, and I think I should say, I have no issue about that.
Okay.
Because it was already in the plan.
Yeah. So if I make that motion, as a, contingency, I guess is the word, oh, I don't know how, whatever.
Contingency to have the fence up?
To do the fence first.
For the first draw.
Correct, the first initial installment or construction draw be for the fence.
I'm okay with that.
On just, very much just, on just the.
Wherever is the.
It'll be the side of the property.
It would be.
That's where it's along Pine Street.
All of the slat, so the slatted side all along Pine Street, and then you said the slatted side on the north, did, or did you say, or not north?
No, you could put the Pine Street up with no problem.
Yeah.
The other will be after the construction.
In the front.
Yeah, but you can, but the fence and truck, they can, yeah, completely through the town.
Yeah, no, that's fine, maybe the Pine Street one would be the one I would.
Greg, are you okay with that?
Yes, I am.
Okay, well, you know, let's, let's get.
I don't know, and contingency is a, it's a word, I mean, I don't.
That's going to be the priority, you know.
I mean, people are going to see the contributor anyway, so I mean.
Well, I understand that, but, I mean.
No, I'm fine with it, I mean, that's, it's already in the plan, so it doesn't, no matter if it's the end of the plan back there, or for a part of the plan, it's still the same.
Right, same amount of money, same thing, gotcha.
Same thing.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll make the motion contingent that the first draw is based around the Pine Street fence.
It includes it or solely the forest? Because if he does, the first draw is also some.
I would, I would say include it, yeah, I would say include.
Right, so.
Correct, that would be my motion.
So, can we repeat, repeat the motion?
The first draw, the first draw of the construction.
Make the motion go forward with this.
Yes, I approve the loan, contingent upon the first draw or installment, whatever it is, would have to include the Pine Street fence.
Okay.
Is that, I think that's fair and reasonable.
With that said, is there a second?
I'll.
You're up, Joe.
Go ahead, Greg.
I would say Greg's agreeable, I mean, I think we're all in understanding of what, you know, hope you get accomplished by it, so I don't want.
Chris Albertson makes the second now, questions, comments, concerns? Now's the time to speak. Okay, hearing none on the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? You and Evans.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg.
We look for great things on North Highway thirty-one. Oh, with the Highway thirty-one changing. Thank you, Jill.
Thank you. All right, I'll just tie it back to you with an amendment, too, that our law plan to make those lights billings good until next year.
Did she, did she just change that?
We got it, we did it.
Say, yeah, 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 yeah.
You got it, yeah.
Next thing we have on our agenda this evening is the one, the only, the Steve Martin. That's right. Yes.
Skipping the.
Wait, wait.
An orange, we got orange.
Oh, it's.
Steve's at the end.
Sorry, next, first, Steve.
Say the best of last, sir.
Yeah, you're.
I skipped with last.
We have, we have the First Treaty of Orders twenty-twenty-one dash eleven creating the AARP coronavirus local history recovery fund, I'll pass that over to Mr. Ray.
We have had some webinars on this, the money that will be coming with the, the recovery program. The first thing the city needs to do is to set up a, a fund, which this is what this basically does, establishes that, because the, we should be getting the first half of our money, I think, sometime in May, and we need somewhere to, you know. Cause the, we should be getting the first half of our money, I think sometime in May, and we need somewhere to, you know, be able to park that until council comes up with the plan on how to, how they wish to spend the money the city will be receiving.
So you're just needing a motion to set up this account, so.
Right, that's what just that.
I'll, I'll, I'll.
So that'd be the approval of the ordinance.
Approval of the ordinance, right.
The man makes the motion to go forward with approval of ordinance twenty twenty one dash eleven creating this ARP Fiscal Recovery Fund. Is there a second?
Uh, I just have a quick question. The half this year, half next, right, Dan? Is that how the funds work?
Yes, we can have and have, and then we have, as it says, until December thirty first, two thousand twenty four to spend that.
Yes.
But we cannot spend anything until council has a plan on how they wish the funds to be spent.
Yeah, I'll send that motion.
Okay. Christian Evans, seconds. Questions, comments, concerns? Carry now, all pairs say aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign?
We're offering readings tonight, John.
Absolutely.
Uh, we suspend the rules and have second, third reading by title.
Chuck Roshi, Chuck Knowles makes the motion to spin rules. Is there a second to that?
I'll second. Christopher.
Chris Evans. There's Alvinson.
Chris Alvinson, seconds?
Questions, comments, concerns? Carry now, all pairs say aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign? Get in, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. On that note, the Department of Treasury did issue its long anticipated guidance today. And just because I, I like pointing to seven, I got email four oh nine announcing a four P M. Local government webinar telling us more information about this, so.
And then it was telling me when it's six thirty.
And it's six thirty, so.
I think, yeah.
Yeah, but, so there's gonna be a lot more. This is one of those things that the orders kinda hit on it, that we've been given big picture guidance, um, which created a lot more questions than answers.
Yeah, I'm curious about developing the plan, what that process looks like and, you know, uh, we're willing more guidance.
Absolutely. So hopefully this is a, a big step in that direction.
I'm sure we can find a place to spend a lot of money, it's just like, that's pretty strategic.
I was at an R D A meeting and, and, uh, uh, the, uh, the chairperson said, you know, this is gonna create, it's the chairperson, or maybe it's Miss Wendy, that says, you know, create a debt for our grandchildren, so we have to be careful how we spend this thing to make sure we're getting the most we've got from the bank, so. So with that said, now that maybe we're ready for the one and the only, the Mr. John Meyer, that's right.
First of all, Terry, I want to thank you for allowing the R D A to use the, uh, Mid American Science Center. It was nice and we're going to come back, I guess.
It's, it's awesome. Would, would you say there were any people there maybe the last night?
Yeah, well, I, I learned one thing. Once you find, once you get money, people come out, they come out of the woodwork. We'd be, you know, hardly stirred, a, a crowd in there before we had our meetings and had we gone to Salem and knew all Benny and Jeffersonville. Uh, but yeah, they, everybody was, oh, so excited. And what gets me, and I shouldn't say this, but Harrison County decided not to play with reform.
Yeah.
And now all of a sudden, they're.
They're there?
They're there, everyone, you know, can, can we be included in? Yeah, I, I, I just wanted a, a couple of things and I'll get out of your head. Uh, cause I don't think a lot of you know what the R D A does, or what we are, or what, how we perform. So I gave a little history, but I wanted, always, if you just remember one thing from what I've said tonight, cooperation or collaboration, not competition. And that's very, I'm a competitive person. I know you all are competitive people, but that's what we're fighting right now. Not fighting, I, I, it, it's, it's just a, it's a huge, huge, huge barrier to get across. And we have five counties in the R D A, Clark, Floyd, uh, Jefferson, Washington, Scott. Uh, and we went into the same knowing that Clark and Floyd is the engine that drives everything in this region. And so there is a lot of competition we have to deal with, and we've been very fortunate with it. Uh, the RDAs were formed originally in two thousand fifteen. Uh, three RDAs at that time got forty two million dollars each. Evansville, Gary, and I think Muncie. Forty two million dollars they got to use as an increment. Uh, we had traveled to Evansville to see what they've done with theirs. It is amazing what they've done with the money. Uh, not just the forty two million dollars, but all of the money that is brought in from private investors to build this, well, uh, I think the, uh, Indiana, the hospital, they, they've got a medical school down there now, was a result of this forty two million dollar put in. So the RDAs were formed in two thousand fifteen. Scott County and Jefferson, we tried, jail was on River Hills at that time. We tried to get started, but just seemed like we didn't get enough county councils to go along with it. So in two thousand seventeen, county councils in Scott, Floyd, Clark, Jefferson, and Washington approved the formation of the R D A. As I said before, Harrison County decided not to play. Their council said, we don't want to. And the real reason, I think, they thought that we were gonna go after boatmen, cause Harrison County's got tons of boatmen. And so they didn't, they didn't wanna play. So we have been meeting since two thousand eighteen, uh, with this idea that there's gonna be a bunch of money, or some money put in the legislature in two thousand nineteen in the Miami budget. Well, of course, that didn't happen. So we meant from January two thousand eighteen, no money in two thousand nineteen, but we did get a hundred fifty thousand dollar grants from I D C, who are going to administer the money here. They invested a hundred fifty thousand dollars in us to come up with a plan. We have a plan, uh. The plan i- is wonderful. We, we tried to buy something that wouldn't sit on the shelf, and you all know what plans do, a lot of them sit on the shelf. And so we have the start, we're in the starting block right now, cause we have a plan. Now this, what you're all, what I, I think we're excited about is that the governor put five hundred million, half a billion dollars in for economic development. There's, there's a lot of criteria, but there's a lot of, just as Josh said with the A R P program, there's a lot of unanswered questions right now. How you can use it, what it can be used for, uh. I, I'm personally asked the question twice now, can you use A R P money as your local match? Cause A R P monies, there is, there's guidelines, so I've been with counties, the same thing, they're having the same problem. What can you use A R P money for? Uh, so that's still a question that hasn't been answered, but that is a possibility. When we formed, we have five members, as I said, I represent, we, we try not to say we represent Scott County. And that's hard because, you know, it's competition, but we have Kevin Kelly from Jefferson County, we have Dan Huber, who's our chairperson, doing an excellent job from Floyd, or from Clark County, Ken Rush from, from down Floyd County, John Jones from Washington County, and my son. And we have been meeting two years and, uh, John, he kinda gets disgusted sometimes, it seems like we're just, just like a paddle, you know, going around and around and around, and we're not going anywhere. There's no money, there's not, you know, there's not a, a pot of gold in the rainbow. And now all of a sudden, that pot of gold up here. And what's gonna happen is that they're gonna award ten grants to regional, I don't wanna say regional authorities, but it has to be, nonprofits can get into this, but they have to have a regional scope. It just can't be a Scott County nonprofit saying, we want, we wanna play. But it's gotta have a regional scope. So what we're trying to do is become the, uh, and it's hard, it's tremendously hard. You see the number of people that came to the meeting, you saw it. I mean, everybody, there's all kinds of things out there people wanna do with money. But this money that's set up as a twenty twenty sixty, as, as, uh, Wendy said, twenty percent the government, twenty percent local match, and sixty percent private investment. And that's, it's not difficult for a lot of large counties, for a lot of small counties like Washington, Scott, Jefferson. It may be a little difficult, but we're gonna, we're gonna work our way through it and try to do that. Uh, but we reformed and if hadn't, once other Indiana, they provided us with all of the help, the leadership. Uh, they have been, Wendy Chester has been, excuse me, fantastic. And she has, she has led us and she provides information for us, and Chamber down there, once of Indiana, have been so supportive of us. And now they have joined, uh, I think the Scott County Chamber has now hired them, and you've already seen the fruits of the labor, I think, hopefully out with multicolor. And I, I can see, they, they have such an outreach and such a, uh, uh, just, they're so well known, and Wendy is so well known in state Indiana, and she has been fantastic for us. So we, we developed this hundred, hundred fifty thousand dollar plan. Uh, each county has their own little section to it. You can find it online at our southern plan, our plan, our Southern Indiana, rda dot gov, I think that's what it is. Uh, but my purpose here is just to let you know that the R D A is in existence, we're working. Uh, I stand up for Scott County all the time, even though we're trying to be regional, it's difficult sometimes, but, uh, we had a presentation and, and Terry, a person out there, uh, from River Ridge. And you know, River Ridge, they have ten thousand five hundred people working out there. They projected to be seventeen five. Now, I don't know if you've been across the river in Prospect and Oldham County there, there's no land over there. There is no land, and what land is there is very expensive. So people are gonna be aware, where are they gonna come? They're gonna come to Southern Indiana. And we have to be prepared for that. One thing that we found out, and I told Terry this, we found out that we thought that housing follows people or jobs. It's exactly the other way. Jobs follow housing. And if you've got a place to live, you know, you've got to source that, and that bottom of mind is always thought it was the other way around. So we've learned a lot, we prep long, and I think now we're, we're really, really engaged. Cause this program, it's called READY, and I, I had to read it, cause it's, uh, Regional Economic Acceleration and Development Initiative, READY, five hundred million dollars. Fifty million dollars we hope to secure. Now, is fifty million dollars gonna come to Scott County? Well, I'm telling you, it's not gonna happen. It's not gonna happen. But things that happened in Clark and Floyd affect Scott County, it affects Washington County. We're in a better situation, I think, than Jefferson and Washington, cause we're on the interstate. And, you know, people, what's, what's thirty miles now, twenty, I, when I was a kid, I thought going to Jefferson was like an overnight trip, you know? Now it's, it's fifteen, twenty minutes, you're there. Times are changing and they're gonna change anymore, cause officially, they're gonna three lane that interstate all the way to Scott or all the way to Seymour. It's gonna happen. It's gonna happen, and that's gonna make Scottsburg, Scott County, a place where people are gonna come, just, I, I hate to say this, we have cheap land. We have cheap land compared to what you see across the river, especially when you get closer to River Ridge in Clark County. That's expensive land now. But people are gonna come, you know, I always think if you build it, they'll come, and that, that's just very true. So the R D A wants you all to be aware of what we're doing, and we're trying to get out each individual membership there. You know, I think there's twenty two incorporated, uh, communities within the five, uh, county area. And, uh, so that's my purpose, just kinda to let you know what we're doing. I, I took a bunch of notes and all that kind of stuff, but it, it's, it's, we still don't know how you can use the money.
So how will we, how, how will we give that information, I think, when you become?
Well, you go on our website.
I'm saying, no, this counselor, how, how would we know?
Well, I guess that's, I, I guess I'm responsible for following.
I just, I didn't know what that's gonna look like.
Yeah, and I don't know.
I missed, I missed, but, you know, I.
It's, it's a. Let me say one thing, if I'm not mistaken, Steve didn't correct me or Christian corrected if I'm wrong, but I thought I heard Wendy Chester say that if you're actually putting in subdivisions and your city's actually contributing with an infrastructure, that's gonna cap toward the private investment.
So the local, not, not necessarily the private investment, the local match, twenty percent local match, is the wild, 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 wild west. Like there's anything, like, so like when you're talking about us providing infrastructure to a subdivision, that can be the twenty percent.
Yes.
If we put sewer infrastructure, water infrastructure.
It's, it's kinda like, I, I feel like a race.
Yes, it is.
You, you, the infrastructure is so important.
Yes.
And that's, that's like your twenty percent match. You know, if, if there's a place that you, you can see, it's gonna be a perfect place for, I mean, just look down at Memphis, look off the interstate, a number of people living down there. It's growing, it's gonna grow even more, and that, that's gonna happen. It's moving farther, farther, farther. So.
The, I'm, I'm trying to get my head around this. Twenty percent local match, twenty percent from, from this fence.
Yes.
Okay, and then sixty percent from, from private industry.
And I think Christian said.
For development purposes, if we wanna do a subdivision.
If you wanna do a subdivision, yes.
Okay.
You're gonna provide all the infrastructure, the roads, or, uh, it, it could have been, the, the idea using a, a subdivision is a good example. Cause they have to have roads, you have to have water, you have to have sewer, and that's an investment that you're making. So that, that's an, you know, in time investment that can be matched.
On the, on the back end of that too, to Steve's point, I think he probably often made this point, the project or whatever we would try to push forward to the R D A has to have regional.
Regional impact.
So if we were to build a subdivision for us, probably not gonna meet the quota unless.
Not really.
Well, it depends. I mean, if there's a five or six county, it would have to, it would have to somehow relate to Jefferson County, to Clark County, to Floyd County.
Well, I don't know.
It would have to have a, it's a very big regional impact.
It's a, it's a, it's a development. Always says it's like grandma's night, you know, it comes to your thing, you know.
It's a, it's woodwork. It just depends on what it, you know, how it's defined as regional impact. Uh, but that's, that's the.
The idea of originalism is big with the governor, and they just have plenty of money into it, since the initial three, forty two million dollars. And now.
Like education.
We, we think that we have a great advantage because the I D C did put, you know, a hundred fifty thousand dollars in for our plan. Our plan is not really suited for this in a way, cause we've got items from Floyd and Clark and Washington, Jefferson, and Scott, and the local communities, but we've got to, we've got a criteria, we're gonna try to grade those programs and see what we can support, what we can think we can win, not what we can support, what we think we can win.
Correct.
Cause we wanna bring the money in. And the money's gonna help us. It's gonna help the whole region. You know, for instance, Jefferson County, uh, State Road sixty, or was it sixty two, that comes from Madison to, to, to River Ridge. It's a, it's, it's terrible. State Road three, you know, there's, there's good examples of, that's gonna benefit Scott County, that's gonna benefit Jefferson County. And we're just, I mean, that's just one of the things, there's all, we've got all kinds of regional trails, that's a big thing that.
High speed.
I have problems with it, but everybody, you know, that's, that's a big thing today. Uh, and one of our members is Adam Michaels, he cycles all the time, and he goes everywhere, and he misses, it's the next best thing to slice bread. So, you know, we're, we're, we're taking baby steps right now, but we think our baby steps are way ahead of some of the others.
Well, we want Scottsburg and Austin and Scott County all part of this.
Exactly.
And, and you've heard me preach about how I, I really want new housing. And to raise our tax rate by this, this one's seven, we have seven subdivisions on our board right now, seven. And we know that there's three, possibly four of these definitely coming up, and it looks very much positive that way. But again, I'm also trying to say to council, just like Steve said, because once corporations see population movement, those algorithms match, and all of a sudden, now you're gonna see more retail, you're gonna see more commerce, you're gonna see more customer services coming to this area, then you're gonna see more industry coming to this area. We have a hundred and fifty acres that have the shovel ready, that we're ready to go forward with these things. So what we have here, Steve's representing, maybe I shouldn't say representing, but part of that board who's from us, and also will have this whole community area in, in purpose, but also Scott, Scott County as well.
It, it's, there's sunshine. You know, as they said, as, as COVID, you know, there's light at the end of the tunnel, and we're, we're hoping that light at the end of the tunnel will shine on us.
Absolutely.
And so I, I wanna thank you all for giving me the time to come over. Like I said, I'm glad to talk to you. Like I said, I'm glad to talk to you. I'm, even though we've sort of like four-year term, we started in two thousand seventeen, nineteen, so, seventeen, excuse me. So our, my term will be up, but I was appointed by the commissioners. And all of our, our people were appointed by the county commissioners. And so we're up for reappointment soon in twenty-one, I don't know. Hopefully we'll continue this, this journey. And that's what it is for us, it's a learning experience. But we've got good people, we've got good support, and we just want to let you all know that we want you to be a part of it.
One thing I heard Wendy say as well, Steve, that one thing Evansville got, they, they brought a lot of their council and a lot of those areas, since they took buses up there as their citizens.
Yeah, and that's, that's. When, when we get to the plans, and we're going to, we're going to try to flood IEDC offices when we get ready to do that. Because that makes an impression, that makes an impression for me. That we have people from Scottsburg, we have people from Jefferson, you know, all five counties. And, and Wendy is, she's, she's gunghole on that idea.
She is.
And, and I think it's a great idea. We have to do that. We have, we have to show your interest, we have to show that we're interested, that we need the money, we want the money, and we're working together.
Absolutely.
Cooperation, not competition. And that's, that's, that's a hard, hard barrier to get over, but we're trying to do that. And so I do appreciate the time, you know. You guys have been, Terry, as I said, has allowed us to use the members, and everybody's amazed by that. They, they love it and it has room. And we try to meet, we were meeting once a month with COVID, went to sort of Zoom meetings and went every other month. But now, this, this whole appointment, we have a hundred and twenty days to put it together. It has to be submitted, I think, by August thirty-first. I mean, it's, can you imagine? At least we have some of the pieces in place. Other areas, I think there's seven, I think, RDAs now, and of those seven, maybe only three or four active.
Yeah.
Or five active. So I think we're situated in the right, right place at the right time. But I thank you all, appreciate your time and keep up the good work.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Steve. Thanks for your presence.
Amen, amen. And back in what Steve said, that's where the station is today, this is the RDA here. That sounds great. So stay tuned for future crashes. And so, thank you, Steve. The next thing I would like to have on announcements, I, we have an announcement here about the airport. And we have tonight with us, Mr. Larry and Mr. Chris. Would you happen to tell us what good news you might have, Joe?
You've got some really exciting news. I've had the airport up for sale for on and off for the last several years. Thirty-two years ago, when I bought it, I always said I'm going to sell when I retire. I retired on a Thursday, Chris called me on a Friday, somebody looked for it, looked to buy it. The guy came up on Saturday and paid cash for it. So talk about a blessing from God. It's awesome. But that's, that's great for me, but I think what's great for the whole town is the guy who bought it is the guy that owns Hockner Aviation and HAC, so he owns almost all of HAC's airport. So he has probably about eight, twelve jets, seventy planes, eighty-something employees. And he must have bought this for his own place. He's out looking for ground to go to runways, he can fly back and forth to work. But in doing so, he's going to put five hundred thousand dollars in the runway. He's going to take all the top soil off, he's going to put drainage in, he's going to put the top soil back on, he's going to crown it, and he wants to extend both ends of it to take it from basically a three-thousand-foot strip to a four-thousand-foot strip. And he definitely has the means to do all that, he's already had all the. The engineers that built Clark County Airport are already out there talking about how to do it and figuring all that out. So it's going to be a great thing for the city because like multicolored, gentac, Walmart, several businesses use it right now when it's dry, they're going to fly their planes in either for people or for carts or for whatever, you know, and I don't even know if you all know about that, but it's been happening for thirty-something years. But, you know, they always call me, was it dry enough, you know, can it come in? So they use it, you know, pretty much for that. But with improvement here, it's going to be, it's pretty much going to use twelve months out of twelve months.
The nice thing, Chuck, is this gentleman wants to become a Scott County resident.
Good deal.
I love maybe you and a couple other guys on the high B O welcome plate.
Yeah. So one of that, and he wants to do, the reason I'm here tonight is he wants me to speak on his behalf because he's traveled the world, he's, he's not around a lot. But anyway, what he wants to do is the ground right next to the lake, I own like up so close and then farther out and so close and farther out, just kind of jagged around the lake. He wants to, to buy that from the city around the lake, from Lake Road to the end of the runway, so he can extend the runway on out, build a road from Lake Road back through the woods, back where he's going to build his house and his hangar. And, because that's where he wants to live, is back there. So what he wanted to bring up tonight was, you know, you know, Terry wants to present, you know, that he wants to buy that strip of ground there so he can expand the runway, build a house and hang it back there on the end, clear road back through there.
There's an area along the lake that I've talked to you, some of you several times about this, that I would like to see possibly developed for high-end housing. And I mentioned some of this to you. But again, I haven't done my due diligence in finding out what I do. I don't think we can sell the waters.
I don't think we want to.
We don't want to.
I mean, I, I wouldn't have it.
I wouldn't either.
But I mean, I, I'd deal with the.
We don't want dogs down there. This is, and this is why I told this show, this is our drinking line. We have to be very careful as a community that we don't in any way part of that. And, you know, so.
Larry, you mentioned jets and airplanes, they go, is there any pontoon lines? Does he say that? No.
Yeah. Just so everyone knows.
I don't want to mite him in Scott.
No, they can't let us go, I already told you that. But Minnesota, I would see those guys, you know, where I lived in Buffalo, they would fly those things in and out of train all the time. It was, it was neat.
Are they going to pave the runway, Larry, or is it just redoing the?
Just going to redo the, yeah, because I asked him, again, I said, how come you're not going to pave it? It was long, seven thousand feet of paved runway, Clark County was long, I want to pave it.
And he said he loves grass, he said he loves grass strips.
Yeah, he loves grass strips. But he's going to make it what's very usable, which you can use it all the time.
He, he needs to buy a little bit north of what Larry's strip is to get some of the, the bulk of the expansion will be on the south side of the runway. So again, if council is open to selling some of that, it wouldn't be close to getting down to the waters. It's not going to be right, but no waters. So we need to figure out if you have an interest in that. If you have an interest in that, then we need to consider that, continue that conversation and.
I, I, I can only speak for myself. I, I'm not opposed to it, but I would want to see the drawing and, I mean, I, I tell you, I mean, if you're asking, are we, if I'm interested, I'm interested in looking at it. But I, I wouldn't make any commitment that, hey, I'm going to sell this because I know exactly what we're talking about.
What I would recommend is maybe field trips with Larry and maybe this gentleman. Maybe if we could all go out at some point and see the area they're talking about. And, you know, would that be, would council be opposed to that?
You can probably see, I mean, that'd be fine, but you can probably see it better from just the aerial map.
That's what I was saying.
But do you know how much property, how much, how much ground does he want to buy? How many acres?
Me and Terry, we would guess around eight to ten acres.
And now that's the section close to Blake, that doesn't include the south part that he's talking about, or is that?
Yeah, but I'm just guessing, Chuck, on how much it is. We didn't, I don't really know. Because he wants to grade his driveway in, right there on Lake Road, and then kind of follow the lake back to where he wants to, back to the end of the runway. If y'all look back on the very end, it's run, they're back from the mountain.
Be, if it's driveway on Lake Road going back, back toward the end of the runway, that's going to be a pretty long drive.
Yeah, it'd be a pretty long driveway.
Is that actually? Yeah, I just, I think, I think, well, is that a real way of? Just seeing, imagining, knowing exactly what he wants.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Those two things are critical. I think, I think most of us are open to it, but we need what he wants and then an aerial map.
Proposal, yeah.
A proposal, yeah.
I did speak with Mark Amick, he's with IDEM. And he said that if you move more than an acre of dirt, you need a rule five permit. And that requires control of any runoff. So that would be something that was, the engineer would be taking care of. So it wouldn't do any kind of polluting of the water. And if you remove trees, there should be no burning. You can only remove certain trees at certain times of the year. So it's quite specific about what can and can't be done. But his, Mark Amick's opinion was that as long as these things are followed, then there's really no reason why the project should not go ahead. Obviously, that's your determination in the end, but I agree with you. Unless you can see what's going on.
Well, yeah, I mean, if I'm selling a piece of property, somebody says, hey, buy a property. Hey, I want to buy your property, well, how much do you want? Well, I don't know.
Yeah.
Well, it's hard for me to decide what I'm going to sell if you don't tell me exactly what you want.
Of course. And, and me see it and say, now, you know, I, there's.
I'd like for us to, for us to look at what the city owns.
Yeah.
How much land and look at this kind of as a, as an overall plan, you know, what are we going to do over there? Right, I mean, I, I don't have any idea how many acres the city owns. And I'm assuming the city owns all the way to the water.
We do.
You know, but I, I think I'd like to find out from, from the state, you know, how, how far down do they allow property owners to purchase late to already late? I mean, I know the property owners don't own through the water there. So how close? Maybe they look at a similar arrangement.
Yeah. Well, the proximity would be to make sure the runoff is contained.
Exactly.
So that's, but in general, that property is borderline worthless.
Exactly, right now, but as Mayor said, he, he was looking at possibly some high-end development at some point. And that's why I, it, it might help us to look at, see, you know, how many acres are we on there? What, you know, what access could share. I know Miranda Road coming back around from the, you know, from the, from the east side. Well, how, how close is that? I mean, I'm not even sure, I don't, I don't know the geography back to looking at. But anyway, I'm perfectly willing to, to look at ideas.
When I looked at the council's information, we have a, we have a sewer connection right there at the old water plant.
At where?
At the old water plant, the old one. And that old water plant sewer line goes underneath I-65. So that was the thought that we actually put.
So there, okay, so long.
Yeah. That's why we're going with that. So we could actually not have anybody handling these type of set system, we could actually bring these.
I would prefer that, right, we're going to put housing down there than we, we not looking at set system. I mean, I'm not really comfortable with that.
Yes, so, and because I found that sewer manhole and.
I guess I don't know where that one is, I'm trying to think.
Actually, I'm in there.
I mean.
Yeah. We're giving it all these things. But the nice thing, they need to build up 65.
Yeah, exactly, I didn't, I didn't realize we had.
Yeah.
We're not.
And, yeah, so, yeah. But anyways, so I wanted to bring this to everybody's attention and to our community's attention. We want to thank Larry for a fun time, thirty-two years, right?
Thirty-two years.
Of fly-ins, guys with, with, what's that little log orange you put on your back on parachute? Why, babe? Those guys are brave.
The nice thing too is this guy, we're, we're keeping the house in several acres. And then this guy just said that we can continue using the place as we've always used it. If we want to have fly-ins, if we want to have weddings, if we want to have family unions, all the different events we have out there, he said, just use it as you normally would use it. He has no problem with any of that.
Larry told me something I didn't realize as well. He said that, that, didn't you say Walmart flies in there regularly as well as gin pack as well as United States Army?
Multicolor.
Yeah, multicolor, yeah. And you said the army flies in as well?
Yeah, the army comes in quite a bit. They do menus at two and three o'clock in the morning.
Wow.
With the big helicopters, yeah.
So, but.
So you just want me to have him draw that out on aerial map on what he wants to do?
Yeah, and, and I'm big on field trips, Larry. I, I'd really like to invite him to see what they're talking about here. And that way you can, what you can see on aerial map, you know, you need to, in my mind, walk the trails.
Can Ashley get us ideas of what the city owns down there, you know, how the property plays and that kind of thing?
Yeah.
Relationship that they want.
Right, we'll have your plan come up with all of that.
I mean, I, I think that, that'd help me to kind of see the overall layout.
Because I want you to know, our housing subdivisions here, you know, we want housing subdivisions up to five hundred thousand or plus homes as well, you know what I'm saying? So, and, and I don't know if you all know this, but I drove to Tipton, Indiana, a week ago, last Saturday, because we have a developer wanting to come here, and he's building homes that are one seventy to two seventy. And I wanted to talk to that mayor, which I talked to for an hour. I, I was in the homes that were being built at the time. I talked to their, their manager there, I talked to people who lived there who had issues and who didn't have issues. The mayor said, it's just been great, he said, we've not had any problems. The man said that if you had an issue, he said, you had that, you had a problem in the floor. And he said, they were there a little week and had it all correctly, he had no problems at all. And so it's been very positive. But my point is, I was in a, one house that was a, it was a four-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, twenty-one square foot for two hundred thousand dollars, which I love. Twenty-one square feet, it was just a piece of. So, so again, you know, we're, again, the prices are going up. So right now, for folks to come and get deals on Scott County property, but we also want to have that upper echelon. Anyways, so, as I said, guys, thank you so very much. I thank you so very much. I think what we do is, is let's get the aerial from you. We'll do our part here and see what the city has. And come out and meet me and see, maybe we can line up a time, Larry, that, that everybody could come out and kind of see what, what he's talking about.
Yeah.
And maybe he can be there to give us his, tell us what he would like to see.
Okay.
What he would like to do. And let council make the decisions, okay?
I'll be finally.
That sounds good, okay.
I'll get him to get a map together, because he's already got, he's already flown the drones, he's got everything mapped out with the dirt work and everything on the existing runway. So he's ready to roll anytime.
Sure, what question do you have for, or Chris? I'm sorry? I said, what, what questions for Larry or Chris do you have? So you're, you're answering that, so. So thank you guys so very much. It's, it looks very promising. Thank you for maintaining the airport.
Okay, thanks.
That's awesome, that's awesome. And I think this gentleman's name was.
Sean Hocker.
Sean, just seemed like a nice guy, just a super nice guy. So young guy, so under fifty, yeah. So guys, thank you so very much.
Okay.
Next thing we have is the, the two thousand, or twenty-twenty-one dash one CCMG award. And let me see if I have that. This is a, says, Dear Scottsburg, the Indiana Department of Transportation Endot has completed the review and selection of projects for funding of the twenty-twenty-one dash one Community Crossings Management Grant Fund Brokerage. Your community has been, has for preliminary been awarded Community Crossings Management Grant Funds based upon your correspondence as follows. So our awarded amount is nine hundred and five thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety-six cents. And, you know, so that's what we have. As, as you know, we have to match, is it twenty percent?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five percent of that, we have to match twenty-five percent of that. But, you know, with this kind of money, being over a million. Twenty-five percent of that, we have to match twenty-five percent of that, but, you know, with this kind of money being over a million dollars, uh, we have estimated that we can pave a third of Scottsburg for that, so we've got two of these bridges now, we can pave two-thirds of Scottsburg. But I want you to know what we're doing is we are identifying roads that have a storm sewer, or, or storm sewer, storm drain under them, so that while those storm drains are plugged up or classed, and we've identified twenty-four supply, so we wanna dig those roads up, but we currently have to put the new storm drains in, so when the new paving comes over, we will probably have a paving here early summer, and a paving probably in the fall. So that, and Lord willing, we can come close to paving to the discussion of this. We're also starting sidewalk, the first sidewalk we're, we're going is probably on Cherry Street from FS three to one, all the way down to Byron Judea's, that's right. You know, we're also gonna identify areas, because we wanna go to the parks, to the downtown, and the schools. So we're going to identify those streets where we will put a sidewalk. We feel that the sidewalks are a picture frame around this beautiful lady we were cleaning up. And with that said, we had a motorhome that hadn't been moved in forty years taken out this last week, and is, and I'm gonna want to know, please, if you have, if you have areas, like Councilman Manson, that in your area, that, I, I wanna know about that, I wanna make sure that our person might need to know those, and we send letters, and, and, and help to encourage folks to get those places to do that. So, uh, so please let me know, when you see things like that, please let us know, uh, Michelle is our code enforcement now, so, uh, and, uh, and we have Josh who does the rest, you know, so. So what other, what other questions do we have?
Yeah.
Mr. President?
I have nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing, Bishop.
Okay. Any other council have anything? Okay, well, I'll, we'll have to say, we're a jerk. We're a jerk, thank you, guys, very much.
So.